Good evening and welcome to the Town of Mansfield's annual town meeting for budget consideration. This evening, we are joined by Sue, who is a sign language interpreter and will remain with us for as long as anyone needs her services. The notice and warning for this meeting was posted on the town's website, the town's cable station, the sign boards found throughout town, and appeared in the Chronicle on May 5th, 2015. It reads as follows. Notice and warning of annual town meeting, Town of Mansfield. The electors of the Town of Mansfield and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified that the annual town meeting for budget consideration will be held on May 12, 2015, at the Mansfield Middle School Auditorium at 7:00 PM for the following purpose: To act upon the proposed budgets for the town's fiscal year of July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016, which proposed budgets were adopted by the town council on April 28, 2015; And to appropriate the sums estimated and set forth in said budgets to the purposes indicated, dated and signed at Mansfield, Connecticut, 30th day of April, 2015. Those eligible to vote at town meeting are all registered voters and any person who is 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen, and liable to the town for taxes on property assessed at at least $1,000 on the last grant list. All those who meet that criteria should have checked in already with the registrar's of voters; if you haven't, please do so now. And we ask those of you who are here just to watch the proceedings to sit in this area over here. With all that out of the way, I will now entertain a motion for the moderators of tonight's meeting. Mayor Patterson?
Nominate Ron Scherin.
Ron Scherin has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Ron Scherin for moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As extensions, Ron welcome.
This is the third time I've had this privilege, and there's still some rough spots, so I ask you to bear with me. Let me ask, how many of you here for your first town meeting? Okay, good, so we'll bear with you, and if there are any procedural issues, we don't want to get hung up on that, and we will try and help as much as we can. And in terms of the procedures and mechanics, we'll have some assistance to keep things moving on. As the first order of business, I would like to appoint, without objection, Town Clerk Mary Stanton to serve as secretary of the town meeting, and Town Attorney Kevin Denine to serve as parliamentarian. Are there any objections? Hearing none, objections, these appointments are duly made. I would also like to stipulate, with one proviso, again without objection, that we adopt Robert's Rules of Order as our standard procedure for this meeting. The proviso is as follows, and I'm not sure if this, how this fits in Robert's rules, so just bear with me. If, as we move ahead, and those of you who are here for the first time, you'll see what I'm talking about, there is a call of the question. I will stipulate that as part of our procedure, anyone lined up to speak will have the opportunity to speak. If you are lined up to speak, we will not call the question until you have had that opportunity. That, I guess, is an amendment I'm making to Robert's rules. With that, I'm going to propose that we adopt Robert's rules unless there is objection. Any objection? Okay, without objection, we will adopt Robert's rules. We will now have brief presentations from Mayor Patterson, Councilmember Bill Ryan, who chairs the Finance Committee, and Randy Wongkonis, Chair of the Mansfield Board of Education, who will outline the materials and the proposed budget publication you have before you. Mayor Patterson tells me she is not speaking, we're going straight to Councilman Ryan, and I will turn it over to Bill Ryan.
Good evening and thank you for coming out. We have a car in a handicapped spot that is running, you say? Toyota Camry, license plate WL7616. I guess you should go move it if you're here. Tonight, you will have an opportunity to vote on three budgets. By far, the most important one is the General Fund, that's the operating fund for the town. It includes the Mansfield Board of Ed, the town, and Region 19. You are aware, I'm sure, however, that Region 19's budget was passed by, well, last, by all three towns, actually, last Tuesday. That is not up for discussion tonight, so no motion should be made with regard to Region 19. The other two budgets we'll talk about are called the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, which I will refer to as CNR, and the Capital Fund or the Capital Expenditures Fund, which are important, but not nearly as important as the General Fund. So let's get right to the General Fund. First of all, where does the money come from? What are the revenues that come into the General Fund? I hope you can see this, but basically, you pay, you, the taxpayer, pay 62% of the money that comes into the General Fund. Intergovernmental revenues, revenues from the state and federal government, are 36% of the General Fund, and the other 2% is fees, such as permit fees, fire inspection fees, and so forth. The important thing to note here, and I'm going to take a few minutes to talk about this, the intergovernmental fund in the year 2007 was 43%. So in the last seven or eight years, it has dropped 7%, about a percent a year. This is something that we are concerned about, we think it's going to continue, and to the credit of the town council, many years ago, and I can say this without embarrassment because I was not on the town council when this happened, the council decided they needed to find other sources of revenue because we knew that the money coming from the state would decline and would continue to decline. So basically, what they did is try to encourage commercial development. Now, this is a little convoluted, but I'll get to the point in a minute. Last year, we had a revaluation, October 1st. Our grant list actually declined a little less than 1%, which is frankly, a very good performance over the last five years. Many towns have seen double-digit decreases in their grant list. The major cause for the decline was the drop in residential real estate, declined 8.7%. Offset almost completely by an increase in commercial real estate of 22%, and personal property, which is mostly commercial, also increased by almost 30%. So that almost offset entirely the drop in residential real estate. So right now, our town has 23% of its grant list in commercial property, as opposed to 15% in the year 2009, the last revaluation year, five years ago. That has been a huge benefit to the town and to the taxpayers of the town, as you'll see as we go on. The biggest part of the commercial development, of course, is stores' center. Let's take a look at what stores' center has contributed. This year, after tax rebate, which applies to the first two buildings put up in stores' center, none of the new buildings that are under construction now will have tax rebates. And after expenses associated with stores' center that the town must incur, the revenue coming into the town, the tax revenue from stores' center was $1,103,000. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see that the mil rate would have more than doubled, the increase would have more than doubled without stores' center. In fact, we're looking at a 2.18 mil rate with, increase, I'm sorry, with stores' center, as opposed to four, over four and a half. That's a big deal. We think this is going to continue to be important because we expect to see that the intergovernmental revenue continued to decline. Just this year, we lost, and you can read it for yourself, we lost $838,000 from the state, and the components of that loss are shown up there. That means a significant tax burden on we, the taxpayers, but because of the commercial development, it's not nearly as bad as it otherwise would have been. Here's what it looked like, the state revenues, intergovernmental revenues, I should say, over the last five years. You can see that the blue bar is the... Is it the red dot, Jamie? It's not working. Oh, there it is. The blue bar is the total intergovernmental revenues, and they have stayed pretty much constant over the last five years. They will not continue to stay constant, we're afraid. We had a little bump last year, the year we're currently in, when I say last year, I'm always going to be referring to the year we're in right now. We had a bump there, but other than that, we've been pretty steady. That's the sources of revenue for a store or our general fund. Now, we'll talk a few minutes about, for a few minutes, about the uses of this revenue for the expenses. Here's where your money goes. Like almost every town in the state, about 2/3 of our expenses are for education. It's about 66%, 32 billion, including, this includes Region 19, by the way. About 32 million out of the $48 million budget, so about 2/3. Here's how this year's budget compares to last year. The town is up 3.1%, Board of Ed, 4%, Region 19, 1.4%. Overall increase, about 3.1%. Now, that is not small, I understand that, it's not, it's not something that we can just say, oh, that's all right. It's a major increase, but as you will see in the next few slides, your taxes will not increase, and that is because of the commercial development, as well as the revaluation on your home. What is driving these cost increases? Here are the primary reasons our budgets have not up. On the town side, $310,000 for contracted salaries and proposed staffing, that is the amount of money that we have, we have agreed to pay to our town employees under contract, and there are several unions involved here. One that really caught us a little bit by surprise this year was the increase in the health benefits. That is, we had been running for several years below the level of most other municipalities in terms of the cost of our health care. That ended last year. We're not sure why, we have done a lot of analysis of this problem. It appears that we were hit with several long-term, high-cost cases in the last year. I think we had 22 cases of, 22 cases requiring over $50,000 in health care reimbursement. The highest, I think, we've ever had, the highest number of cases we've had, we've ever had before that was 12, so we almost doubled. Will this continue, will we go back to where we were? We honestly don't know. We have taken the cautious route and are budgeting for the current situation. We have a $60,000 increase for the resident state trooper program, that is simply because their salaries and benefits have increased and we have to take our share. We happen to be the town, the town in the state that has the most state troopers, we have 10 state troopers. There is a proposal, as you may have heard, by the governor in his budget, to increase the reimbursement rate from towns to the state troopers from 70% to 100%. That is not included in our budget, it has not passed, it has not come out from the state as a fait accompli. If it does, it will add about $500,000 in cost. That's a lot. We're hopeful, but we can't be assured that it will not go through, or some part of it will not go through. We will be keeping on top of that as time goes on. The state, by the way, it looks like is not going to finish up their work on the budget, which means on what comes into the towns until June 3rd. So that's three or four weeks away. We will not be setting a mil rate tonight, probably, because we want to see where some of the, and there's some other issues as well that I'll talk about in a minute, we want to see where they end up before we set the mil rate. What we're proposing to you tonight is where we stand right now. Couple of other cost drivers, we're, $40,000 decrease in debt service, this is a very good thing. We actually, I think, are the fifth lowest town in terms of total bonding, fifth out of 1 in 69 in the state. That's the, the, we're the low, we're almost the lowest, okay? There's an increase of 4% to the Mansfield Board of Ed, and Mr. Wongkonis will talk about that in a few minutes. $142,000 increase to Region 19, that's a 1.4% increase. Their budget went up about 1.4%. The, as you may know, the cost of that, it's split between the towns of Mansfield, Wellington, and Ashford. It's based on the street population as of October 1st the year before, and the population stayed very much, the distribution of population stayed very much the same. Mansfield decreased, the others two decreased just slightly more, so the apportionment of costs is pretty much constant. The town manager submitted a budget, and for the last roughly two months, the town council has been examining the budget, and I want to go through with you the changes that we made to the town manager's budget. In total, we increased the town manager's budget by $58,000. There was one increase, the first one you see up there, $148,000, to what is called fund balance, and I will explain that in a minute. In fact, I'll, I'm going to come back to the slide, so you'll see the others in a minute. Fund balance is essentially what is left over over years of time between revenues and expenses. If you were in business, not municipal business, but regular business, private business, you would call it net worth. Fund balance is important in determining a town's bond rating. We have, we have been told by the bond, bonding agencies that they like to see a fund balance between 10% and 15% of the annual general fund. We're not there yet, but as you can see, over the course of the last several years, starting in 2006, whoops, sorry, we have made some progress, whoops, sorry again. This is where we were, we were about, we were 4.4% of general fund in 2006, and it has steadily increased over the last seven years to 8.1%. That's where we are this year. The manager's budget had no contribution to fund balance. As a result of that, if we had accepted it, we would have dropped to 7.8%. We elected, we, the town council, elected to add $148,000 to keep us constant. We know that there are going to be some bonding issues coming up in the next several years. Four Corners Sewer Project, for example, that's going to happen probably the year after next. There's also undoubtedly something we're going to have to do for the schools at some point, probably in the next three or four years. Those are big numbers. Maintaining our current bond rating, or perhaps improving it, will mean hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings in interest when we do have to do this bonding. So that was our rationale for maintaining fund balance at 8.1%. Back to this slide before, the other changes that the town council made to the town manager's budget were all reductions. We deferred a new firefighter position, which was scheduled to come onboard July 1st, beginning of the fiscal year, six months to January 1st, saving us $33,000. We reduced the general fund contribution to Parks and Recreation for Playgrounds by $40,000. The town council felt that the contribution we made to the stores' community center playground, which you may know about, was well over $100,000, and we figured that was our limit on playgrounds this year. And lastly, we reduced, we reduced the engineering professional and technical line for an emergency action plan that we were required to do for the dam at Bicentennial Pond. We have to do an emergency action plan, whatever that is. We have the money in other parts of the budget that we can use to pay for it, it was $18,000. Those are the changes the town council made to the town manager's budget. I'd now like to call on the chairman of the Board of Ed, Mr. Randy Wongkonis, and he will give you some more detail on the education budget.
All right, thanks, Bill. First of all, I want to acknowledge the members of the Board of Education, some of them are in front, others are shy, I guess, Jay Mickle, Martha Kelly, Catherine Hollis, Carrie Sorensen Bernstein, John Fradello, Suzanne Everett, Kathy Ward, and Sarah La Colton. They work a lot of late nights and spend a lot of time thinking about our schools, and they work very hard for that, so I want to thank them and acknowledge them. So, the budget that was passed by the Board of Education was for $22,47,750, this is an increase of $853,866, or 4.03%. So I want to make some points about the overall budget. First of all, it maintains our class sizes. There's been considerable upward pressure over the past few years through the budget cuts on the class size, and this year, we maintain the same number of teachers, we try to limit that, and so in general, the class sizes will not be increasing for the coming year. Second point is that we maintain the breadth of the program. A priority for the board has been to maintain the diversity and the breadth and depth of the program we have, this includes related arts, after-school programs, enrichment, things like that, tech ed, and these programs remain intact with the proposed budget. The challenge for us the past few years has been the rollout of mandated programs. There's been a number of things that have been rolled out, and these are mandated from levels above Mansfield, and we've had to deal with them, and the timeline for the rollout of these things have been very aggressive, and it creates a certain strain and stress on our staff. The rollout of the Common Core State Standards, which focuses primarily on mathematics and language arts, as well as literacy and other content areas, the adoption of these standards requires some change in our curriculum so that they better aligns with the Common Core standards. We have a new computer-based assessment program for our students, the Smarter Balance Assessment, and we've successfully rolled that out. And the new programs for teacher evaluations, the teachers now have to develop goals, they are evaluated by the principal, and there's classroom time, observation as well, and so there's a number of things that are happening in the schools just in the past few years, and this has kind of sided with the tight budgets. So the hard part of this budget is that it reduces staffing levels by one net position, and that includes the elimination of the language arts coordinator and the math coordinator. These are positions we've had for a number of years. The coordinators have expertise in these subject areas, and they work with the teachers on mentoring, developing, coaching, implementing changes in the teaching practices, and things of those sort. And so this is not a trivial thing to lose these positions, but this is due to budget limitations. We do add one budget line for a district-wide curriculum coordinator. We have needs for better aligning our curriculum in our schools, across the different schools, and in progression from one grade onto the next. This person will also contribute to teach professional development and assessment, and so there's a result of a decrease in one net position. So for the specifics on the increases that we see in the budget, as Mr. Ryan mentioned, the increase in health insurance costs hit us very hard, and so our, on our part of the budget, it's about a 10, 10.2% increase, which amounts to $387,000, and that's a cost that we have that's increased. Our increase in salaries is about 1.36%, so overall, this is not a large percentage increase, but this is our largest budget line, and so that adds up to about $194,000. We have had significant special education costs this year, and we've dipped into the Special Education Reserve account, and so we need some money to make that account whole, and that amounts to $85,000. Next line for $72,000 is for professional technical services. The overall budget line for that hasn't really changed, and so this is the land and land in this, the networking fees and structure hardware that's involved in that. A year ago, we were able to prepay some for this year, and so that made the line, that budget line, look smaller this year, and it's going to back up to be fully funded, and so that's that increase. There is not a large increase in that line otherwise per se. We proposed nearly $50,000 for an increase in technology treatment. One of the things that's been hit very hard since 2008 is the line for computers, computer workstations. That has been decreased by 60 to 75%. Year after year, it has catching up to us. We have over half our computers over five years old, and it's causing problems with the instructional use of them, because the software and hardware just isn't no longer compatible with what we need for instruction. Other small increases in bus transportation, energy costs, and then the bottom line is a sum of all the other small increases and decreases in other budget lines. And if you look at the graph of where the overall increases come from, you can see at the bottom, the increase in benefits accounts for about 45% of the overall increase in the budget, salaries nearly a quarter, and together, salaries and benefits in the budget as a whole amount to 85% of our budget, so we need to hit those two lines with feeling. The tuition, the increase into the Special Education Reserve Fund, it was about 10% of the increase. The professional technical services, smaller, and the IT department, even smaller, spliced in that increase. So, some history on our budgets. If you look at this and you see a tale of two eras. If you look at this and you see a tale of two eras. If we look, and this is a graph showing for budget year from oh-three, oh-four on to the fifteen, sixteen budget, which is here on the right and shown in blue, that's our proposed budget percent increase. If you look at the first six years of this, from the oh-three, oh-four budget to the oh-eight, oh-nine budget, the average increase over that time was about five point three percent per year. The recession hit in two thousand and eight, and in two thousand and nine, we sort of did, we tightened our budget, and it's a decrease of about one point six percent, followed by another very small decrease in the ten, eleven budget. Two more years of absolute flat budget, and then a small increase in the thirteen, fourteen budget. So it's not until this year that we are currently in, fourteen, fifteen year, that our budget again matches what it was in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And as part of this, we have still met our contractually obligated general wage increase for employees. We pay for and absorb the increases in health insurance, and then just general inflation. And so the question is, oh, and then the last point I want to make. So if we look from oh-nine, ten budget to the current proposed budget, fifty, sixteen budget, if you average that out, even including our four percent budget this year, it amounts to about point seven five percent per year. And so that's a very small increase over that time. So, how do we manage to do that? Well, you have to give up some things. Overall, there has been a decline in school enrollment. It varies from week to month to month, and so you take kind of a snapshot at the beginning of the year, and from the two thousand and eight year until the projected start of the next school year, we're down about two point nine percent. So you hear about declining enrollment. In general, that's true, but it's not dramatic. It's a, it's a slight decline. We've, over that period, we've reduced our certified staff by seven point three full-time equivalents, which is about five point five, so it's a disproportionate decrease in certified staff. The number of non-certified staff has decreased by thirteen and a half full-time equivalents, or about seventeen percent. Every one of our bargaining units that we work with has accepted a salary freeze for at least one year, and minimal wage increases the other years. And there are, the employees are paying an increasing amount of their insurance premium costs year after year. We've eliminated the assistant superintendent position, eliminated coordinator of English Language Learning Services. Our technology budget is down by about ninety thousand dollars per year, has been, and this is why the, our computers are aging out on us, and we need to restore some of that. We're proposing about fifty thousand put back into that budget line, but it still is a way to back up to where it was. The total number of buses has decreased from twenty-three to sixteen, that's about a thirty percent decrease, and so the bus rides are getting a little longer, we have more parents dropping their kids off at school every day. Our supply budgets have been decreased year upon year, year after year. That hasn't changed since the oh-nine, oh-ten budget to a large extent. We no longer are contributing to our school lunch program with careful management, that has become self-sustaining, and we hope that continues as well. We've eliminated minority internship program, and another thing that's helped us out a lot is we've reduced tuition costs out of district by keeping our special education students in district. And so our, our special ed staff is working very hard to try to educate our special ed kids here instead of sending them elsewhere, which would cost us a lot more. And then finally, I want to mention a couple of things. I want to acknowledge the town council for providing some money for facilities after the budget building program was put on hold, where we still have, we have needs for our D J, especially our elementary schools. And the town council has appropriated two hundred thousand dollars a year for the last few years to improve, there's security improvements, you see the doors, cameras, things like that at our schools, and some technology improvements. A lot of that goes towards the, the hardware and the back door for the net and things like that. And they've also provided a few hundred thousand dollars for minimal maintenance facility repairs. These are things just to kind of keep the school buildings going until a longer term, where a permanent solution can be decided upon. But there are still significant facility needs that remain. We have roofs that are all well past their warranty period, and they need to be replaced very soon. We have boilers need to be replaced, we have portable classrooms that are aging, they're well past their expected lifespan, and the roofs are being, and things like that. So we do have some very significant facility needs that are coming up. And with that, I will turn this back over to the story.
Thank you, Randy. I'm going to take you through the last two budgets now very briefly. First is called the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund, and then the Capital Fund. The Capital Non-Recurring Fund and Non-Recurring Fund exists because when we do a major project, the sources of revenue are also often many and multi. For example, the Four Corners Water, Sewer Project will be, bonds will be involved, taxes will be involved, government grants will be involved. So this fund is sort of a holding tank. We bring all the money in, we get it in, we put it out to the project. The major source for the revenue here is, of course, the general fund. And we get a little bit from ambulance fees and from the Oegan Peacock Grant. Its uses, most of it goes directly to the capital fund, as you might expect, with some going to Management Services Fund for technology replacement. Note, the CNR Fund does not include recurring and non-capital expenditure, which we have adopted a pay-as-you-go policy for the last three years or so, and I think it's working The Capital Fund gets most of its money, Capital Fund is, as you might expect, for capital projects, gets most of its money from the CNR Fund. And you can see the sources of, the other sources of money there. This two million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars goes to various departments. You might expect public works and facilities management being by far the largest, about seventy percent of the total. In particular, what, what do we plan to do next year with this money? The biggest project is the fueling station down here on this road. It is very old, needs replacement. We have in-ground tanks that are failing or close to failing, and that's going to cost us about a half a million dollars. I will not go through the remainder of these things except to point out that, as Mr. Walonkonis did, the, the two items, the two hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure for the schools and the technology equipment. This is where in the third year, I believe, of providing four hundred thousand dollars for these purposes to the schools, and we will continue to do that for another few years. What does this mean for you? This is the key item. It means, believe it or not, that your taxes are actually going to go down. For the median home, taxes will decline forty-nine dollars, or about one percent. The mill rate goes up. Remember that your taxes are a product of mill rate times your assessed value of your home. So your assessed value of your home goes down, the mill rate has to go up to keep those constant. Because of the commercial development, which I mentioned earlier, we expect the median homeowner will see a forty-nine dollar decrease in taxes for this current year, for the year coming up. And I want to caution you, not everyone will see a decrease. Go home and look at the evaluation, evaluation last October first, and see what happened in the evaluation. And that will help, that will determine what happens to your taxes. But the median household, they go down by forty-nine dollars. Here's where your forty-seven hundred dollars, if you're a median homeowner, goes. Three thousand, over, about almost thirty-one hundred of it goes to education, and then you can see for yourself the remainder, where the remainder goes. Those percentages have remained fairly constant over the years. In summary, we think we have a good budget. Three point one percent in general fund expenditures increase, a tax decrease of one percent for the median homeowner. We are funding our current services. We've added some staff to advance some council goals, and we hope you will agree with us. There are some continued, issues that we continue to monitor. I mentioned the government transfer, intergovernmental transfers. We still don't know, probably won't know until three, three weeks from now at least, what we're going to get. The resident super reimbursement rate, we hope will stay the same, but we're not certain of that. There's also another mandate, a stormwater permit mandate, which requires towns to clean and drain their, their stormwater basins more frequently. This is going to, if this goes through, and it hasn't yet, this will add another hundred thousand dollars to our cost. What can you do today? You have the opportunity to increase or decrease programs. In the booklet that you got when you, when you signed in, you will see on page nine a description of how you make a motion to make a change, and you will see on pages twenty-one to twenty-four what you can make motions on, the programs. You cannot vote on part of a program. You can only vote on increasing or decreasing a program. Now I will read the appropriations act, and after I'm finished, it's up to you. Resolve that the proposed general fund budget for the town of Mansfield for fiscal year July one, two thousand and fifteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of thirty-eight million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Which proposed budget was adopted by the council on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen? Be adopted, and if the sums estimated and set forth in said budget be appropriated for the purpose indicated. Further resolve. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Statute of Section ten fifty-one, the proportionate share of, for the town of Mansfield of the annual budget for Regional School District Number Nineteen shall be added to the general fund budget appropriation for the town of Mansfield for fiscal year July one, two thousand and fifteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and said sum shall be paid by the town to the regional school district as they become available. Resolve that the proposed capital fund budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand and fifteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of two million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, be adopted, provided that the proportion proposed to be funded by bonds or notes shall, at the appropriate times, be introduced for action by the town council, subject to a vote by referendum as required by Section four oh seven of the town charter. And finally, resolve that the proposed capital non-recurring reserve fund budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand and fifteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of two million, two hundred and ten, two hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, be adopted.
Thank you, Phil and Randy. Before I ask if anyone wants to speak on the resolution before us, including presentation of amendments, let me just outline some basic procedural guidelines in addition to what was mentioned. I will ask individuals who wish to speak to please line up at one of the microphones, and I will ask, when it's your turn to speak, provide your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes. That is a maximum, not a minimum. And I will ask if you want to speak on a particular motion or amendment, to speak once until all others who wish to speak on that have had their turn. And again, you can comment on the, on the basic motion of the budget and present amendments as Councilman Ryan indicated. And let me note that particularly for those who are new at this, Maria Capiola, the assistant town manager, is seated down below. And Maria and others on the staff can assist you, as time permits, in making sure that your amendment, if you propose one, is in correct order and that its wording reflects your intent. It would be very helpful if you can give your amendment to Maria in writing, and she'll put it up on the screen, and I ask you to bear with us, since it's, we're doing this in real time, and it's important that it be done correctly, more important than that it be done fast. Amendment requires a second. Once seconded, it will be discussed. Town and school district staff are here to respond to factual matters, but they will not engage in a discussion of the merits of an amendment one way or another. Town council and Board of Education members are also here. They, like any other resident of the town, can express their views, but they will do so as members of the community, called on in order and speaking as individuals. Again, I ask that everyone limit their comments to no more than five minutes and try to avoid redundancy. When all who wish to speak have been heard, I will call for a vote, and anyone can also call the question, as indicated. Anyone lined up can speak before the question will be called. And to call a question, after all I've spoken, requires a two-thirds vote in the affirmative. On this, and on subsequent amendments and everything else up to but not including the final vote on the budget, we will first have a voice vote. I will rule on whether the motion or the question has passed by the respective required margin. If I can't make a determination, or if my ruling is challenged, we'll have a standing vote. On all votes, only those who are eligible to vote may do so. That is, those of us who have the cards that we were given when we signed in, those red And if we have a standing vote, I'll ask you to hold your card in the air to be counted. You can also make a motion to have a vote on an amendment by written ballot. This requires a majority vote. If approved, the written ballot vote will be undertaken. The vote and the count on that usually takes about fifteen to twenty minutes. Following all discussion and amendments, or if the question is called and all standing have spoken, we will vote on the underlying resolution, that is, the budget resolution presented by Councilman Ryan, as amended at that point. Under the terms of the town charter, that vote must be by written ballot, and we'll discuss procedures for that at the time. So with that, let me begin by asking if anyone has any comments proposing to make. Yes?
No, Alderman, not at all. I hope, I'd like to make a motion relating to procedure. In our past years, some people have told me that because of what they do for a living, or who they're employed by, that they do not always feel free to vote their conscience at the town meeting, because of a concern that there might be repercussions relating to their work if they fail to vote the correct way. Because of this, I'd like to move that all votes of substance, those increasing or decreasing the amount or proposing final budgets, be taken as written ballots.
Is there a second to that? Is there discussion on that motion? Let me ask the town manager.
Mr. Scherr, just a procedural point. I don't believe Council Ryan's motion was ever seconded.
Oh, good point. Is there a second for, for Mr. Ryan? There is a second? Okay. That has been made, thank you. On the, on the motion before us to have votes by written ballot, any discussion? If there is no discussion, I will ask all those in favor, again, the motion is, please restate the motion that...
That all votes taken tonight on matters of substance, that is, that would increase or decrease items or approve a final item, would be taken by written ballot.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
In the opinion of the moderator, the noes have it. Is there a challenge to that?
Yes.
And I will ask, I will ask for a standing vote. All those in favor, hold your red card and stand. I'm sorry, is there a question? All those in favor of the motion, that all votes on matters of substance, i.e. an increase or decrease to the budget, be taken by written vote, shall. or decrease to the budget, be taken by written vote, shall. So if you support this motion, you are standing then. Is there anyone who can assist in a count? I'm going to ask that you be seated, and all those who oppose this motion, stand. The motion is defeated. Are there any other, anyone else who is stupid to the underlying motion, or amendment? Yes, anyone?
Have we moved the honor?
Yes, the honor.
The last time we had a large referendum between the...
We're in a campaign.
I'm sorry, Republican stores. The last time we had a referendum on the school budget, and the town turned it down, the budget was adopted anyway, because we have what's known as a non-binding referendum. So we have here that if we adopt this, then we have to be introduced for action by the town council, subject to a vote by referendum. Okay, they just turned it down again, and it's a waste of time.
There's a basic question of fact here, and without getting into a debate on the merits, I will ask a simple response on the question of fact. The question is, if there is a referendum disapproving the budget, does the town council have the authority to act otherwise?
As it's done in the past.
As I said, this is a basic question of fact, and I don't want to get into a discussion at this point of the merits of that. Let me ask our town attorney.
Good evening. Under section C four oh five D of the charter, there is one, three questions asked, one of which is binding on the town, which is, the binding question is, are you in favor of the budget as adopted on, this case, the evening twelve? And then two advisory questions of whether it's too high or too low. If the vote to repeal succeeds, then the town council, under subsection E, has to adopt a substitute budget, a substitute resolution, and that is, that is the budget that will be adopted by the town. So there's not a second referendum or referendum.
To play that further, I don't quite understand what you just said. I'm sorry. It's not so good with lawyers, Zach.
For the hazards of going to law school. If the town meeting adopts a budget, and a sufficient number of signatures are petitioned under the charter, to take the adopted budget from the town meeting to referendum, the question of whether or not the town meeting's budget should be upheld or repealed, is binding on the town. There are two, that's the charter line countries, that is, the binding question shall be, are you in favor of the budget as adopted on, insert the date of adoption, and two advisory questions shall be, if it's defeated, is it too high, too low, and the school budget portion is too high or too low. Then goes on, if the vote to repeal succeeds, the town shall, the town council shall, not later than twelve midnight on June thirtieth, adopt a substitute budget and substitute resolution establishing the tax rate.
So either way, it can be overridden to one degree or another. It's not totally binding. Is that what you're saying? In other words, if it gets turned down on a referendum, then you can put a substitute in at your discretion?
The town council, the town council then adopts a substitute budget.
At your discretion, without a number of approval or approval by the town?
Right.
Which effectively renders it a vote null and void, I think, right?
We have, we have a legal interpretation, which people can hear as they wish. Is there discussion further on this?
Thank you.
Last year was a very complicated year.
Do you identify?
I'm sorry, I'm Tony Moran. I'm on the town council. But, so I'm speaking from my recollection. It was a very complicated year, because, once again, we had no state funding firmly in place. We had very pessimistic estimates in the budget. What the town council did was prepare a conservative budget. It was defeated at one point, I think it was, I'm not sure whether it was last year or the year before, in referendum. The town council convened and reduced the proposed budget. Now, this did not mean that the budget fell below the prior year's budget. And I think people perceived that because there wasn't an actual cut in their tax payments, that the council had failed to act in response to the referendum. The council members were very much aware of the results of the referendum, and did reduce the proposed budget. But many people felt that because their taxes did not go down, that the referendum results had not been responded to. That was not the way the council, at that point, looked at that decision.
Other, yes?
My name is Rick Hossig. I live on Middle Turnpike. I am not on the council. I am a resident. I would like to answer the woman's question in simple English, not legally. For those of you who are not lawyers, referendum is not mandatory. It has to be petitioned within twenty-one days of this meeting tonight. We were successful, two years ago, in getting enough signatures to get it on the ballot. We were successful in getting enough people to vote the budget down. And the council has the right, once that happens, to increase the budget, decrease the budget, or keep it the same, and then adopt it. And that's exactly what happened. Forget all the other smoke and mirrors. In order to get a referendum, you must get three hundred signatures on a petition, within twenty-one days of this meeting. Tonight is the night to vote on the budget. Thank you.
Virginia Ryan, Town Council, Palm, one sixty-two Maple Grove. I mean, it's a sad day, when people come to a meeting such as this, and they ask a straightforward question, and we can't get a straightforward answer. And I think it's a great frustration. A great frustration, a great frustration that people have. People want to know if their vote matters. People want to know if they go to the polls and cast a vote, whether it matters. And the question that was before us, the last referendum, after good citizens went out and accumulated the three hundred signatures that were needed to take a vote to referendum, people went to the polls and voted. And they voted on one of two questions, whether the budget was too high, or the budget was too low. The referendum as of past was that people determined that the budget was too high. Clearly, as common sense people, we expected that the council would then reduce the budget, because that is the common sense. That was the result of the vote. And to have people parsing, remember Florida and the hanging chats, and how every vote is supposed to happen?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry. My point is, the straightforward question was asked of our town attorney. If this budget gets the signatures to go to referendum, and people vote that the budget is too high, is the council obligated to reduce it?
The question on the point of order is, this is discussion of the underlying motion, the motion for the temporary. Any other people wish to speak?
How about explaining what you just said?
I'm sorry.
Explain what you just said. You made a declaration based on Robert's rules, but nobody understood it. How about telling us what you said, please?
This discussion that was just held is on the basic motion presented by Councilman Ryan for the budget of the town.
So let's hold on.
That was discussion regarding that general question, so I allow the discussion to continue.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Arthur Smith, seven four Mulberry. For those of you who are new to Mansfield, you may not know, Mulberry and Wormwood Hill used to be areas in town where there was a silk industry. So when we look at commercial ventures in this town and put them in historical context, we need to realize that we do not have a crystal ball. We have to look at what we do know now, what facts are in our hand. We don't know about the pilot funding. There are many questions with regards to the percentage. Will the new percentage act thirty-two be actually implemented? The promised forty-two that never was implemented? Also, if you look at legislation currently pending, we don't know about workers' comp requirement, whether or not the new presumption, that when they have cancer, it is employment-related. That will be an additional cost to the town. There are many things that we do not know, and we certainly can't hold our elected officials to things that they don't know. But what we can do is ask them to seriously consider those facts we do know. They're in our hands. Now, let me give you a few of those. On February the ninth, two thousand and fifteen, there was bipartisan support. Where was that bipartisan support for? It was for reconsideration, based upon the Connecticut Conference of New York's policies about how we are going to look in the future to employee benefits. And as you've already heard, they're skyrocketing. We cannot maintain them as they are. And in this bipartisan resolution, both parties came together to suggest to our CEO, Matthew Hart, that he take those issues of the CCM, and look to the MERS program, and look to the possibility of having a new tier for new employees. This was an acknowledgement, we can't continue spending as we are. It was bipartisan. There's also been bipartisan support for being more diligent about what we're spending for. Last November, the playground was proposed on land that we did not own. In fact, they did not even know the terms of the lease for that playground, that was at a value that's something like eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, we don't blame Sarah Anderson, and we do not blame Maggie Fromm, the fundraisers in that effort, for this oversight. But we certainly would have been somewhat concerned if our finance financier, Mr. Ryan, had not considered it. But he thought, yes, we need to know that fact. So when you looked at this budget, you look at the new positions that are being added, and there are three, one for a firefighter. Keep this in mind. That firefighting position and the whole totality of the spending there hasn't been evaluated since two thousand and two. We now have both urban, because of Mansfield stores, and rural firefighting, firefighting skill sets that we need. That hasn't been considered. This needs to be put on pause. Also, with regard to the public work specialist, it's based primarily on grant monies. Well, there have been no studies, no onerous little studies, to determine whether or not we'll continue to get these grants, given how much politics has changed here. We've lost some wins. It was one last moment, I have a section with full-time accounting nation. We've had a need to determine, first of all, whether or not there's fraud. It wasn't in this budget to have a fraud line, as recommended by our auditors, or to have a risk assessment of fraud. Now, before we spend money on a new account, we need to know whether or not the current program that we have is viable. It made a seven million dollar mistake. Not only did it make a seven million dollar mistake, but if you look at the current budget, there were also mistakes that were blaring. Now, I think the final question we need to... I want an additional fifteen seconds and additional twenty-five seconds. You are not looking for poison by concern because of majority. We have a moderator here. Now, let me conclude. With regard to fraud assessments and fraud analysis, this is the only way that we can responsibly act. Now, with regards to what, where the buck stops, our CEO, or the financial officers, what we need to know is, the buck has got to stop somewhere with all of these accounting mistakes.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
By understanding that there is a motion on the floor without the budget?
Yes.
So is every comment supposedly related to that motion?
It's related to the budget.
Right, thank you.
And these are all, you know, whatever you think about them, per our con, these are all related to the budget, and they are therefore applicable.
Tom Levine, twenty-eight times strive, resident and proud parent of twin daughters in public schools. I'd like to thank the town council and the Board of Education for the hard work and important I would venture to guess that all of us in this room, who are adults, who are voters, are the products of education, many public and some of those private, and we're the beneficiaries of generations that have kept the faith in not just maintaining education in schools the way they are, and gratefully so. And as the world continues to make finding work, as the world globalizes, as our future citizens and workers with higher levels of skill, I believe it's our obligation, as the current generation, to give to our children what past generations have given to us. And yet, when you look at the past five years of budget, we see that the increase overall has been like seventy-five percent. For five years, the consumer inflation rate has been almost two percent, just a notch below that. We have lost seven point three full-time equivalency positions that are regular staff, thirteen and a half full-time equivalency of non-certified staff. We've lost positions that will make a difference in the lives of future citizens, like a coordinator for English language services. After all those flat lines, I hear from, I'm not a teacher in the school system, but I hear that it's difficult to get subs, because we're choosing to pay them at a low rate compared to surrounding towns. And I appreciate that the Board of Education and the town council have faced very difficult budgetary times and decisions. But please make no mistake, we're proposing eliminating two curriculum coordinators now, at a time when we're asking all of our teachers to adopt new standards. Math and literacy, English language skills, are essential to our future citizens and worker success. I'd like to make a motion, and I'm going to beg the help of some of the staff. I move that the general fund education budget be increased by the amount, and here's where I need help, required to reinstate the two curriculum coordinators in math and English language arts. Year after year, our cuts, and these are cuts with increases in class size, mean that our future students do not have the quality of schools that some of us have had, and I admit I'm blaming no one on the school committee. Look at our schools, and you'll see that there was, we have a proud tradition in this town of valuing education and improving it. If you look at our buildings, though, the students going to these old elementary schools are not enjoying the kind of buildings, the state-of-the-art equipment that we once had in this town, because we haven't been able to replace them. And I'm okay with that, if we're continuing to give students the same quality of teaching, and the support for teaching, and the ability to improve that teaching so that we keep up. But I worry that that's the part. I can live with the fact that compared to surrounding towns, we now have students who in the elementary schools have the same room that serves as a lunchroom, a cafeteria, and a gym. That's not common. That's not ideal. But if we were funding education, so...
I'm sorry, let me just make... I'm sorry, but let me just make sure that we all understand. Your motion is to increase the general fund education budget, which is number, where is that on the... On page twenty-two. Education, page eight, which is at the bottom, the last item on page twenty-two. And there is a requirement that you indicate an amount, and you're asking for guidance, I suppose, as to what that amount should be, so that your resolution can be appropriately worded.
And I'm fine, yes, for just the amount to here, if that's appropriate.
Is that...
So you're... That is exactly my intent.
Okay. So there's a second to that motion. Is there discussion? I'm going to let others discuss. Who is, anyone lined up to speak to that motion?
Hi, my name is Tetea Cassa, seventy-five Maple Road. I'm also a professor in math education with expertise in curriculum at the University of Connecticut, and I fully support reinstating these positions. Simply put, there, this is just an unprecedented time in the history of our nation in terms of what we're doing with respect to curriculum. And primarily, that's coming from the Common Core, which I'm sure many know, that focuses on math and language arts. And I can appreciate any citizen's concern for any kind of raise or, you know, any kind of expenditures that we have, but do consider that when we take a look at the values of our properties, those often are driven by the perceived quality of our schools, and that falls to the different test scores. And what we test are math and language arts. I appreciate that there is also a tension by the Board of Ed to have a coordinator for that oversees entire district. However, if you hire someone with language...
Who wishes to speak? Question... The mill rate we have...
Point zero nine, no, point zero nine.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? And again, I don't want to, I don't want to cut off any discussion about anything, but there's much to be discussed here tonight on...
Or can the person who made the original motion adopt it as a friendly amendment so no discussion is said? You have less than, the other person who adopted this friendly, discussion?
Yeah, we could, we could ask that. Does the person who wished to make the initial motion, the one eighty-four, accept this as a friendly amendment?
I accept this as a friendly amendment.
With that, the parliamentarian says...
And the second.
And the second, yeah? Okay. With that, we have changed the motion to simply say ninety-two four instead of one-eighty-four eight. Correct? Okay. So now we can continue discussion of this motion as it has been amended.
Stephen Feathers, Girleyville Road. My question is whether or not we remove the two positions and replace them with the one district-wide coordinator because of budgetary concerns or because of determination on what we actually needed? Was it to cut that amount from the budget, or was it for...
As a matter of fact, I would ask our school...
It's actually both. We have district-wide curriculum needs that could use someone overseeing them on a district-wide basis. We have, it's a, it's both. So we have, we have curriculum issues that we would like to address across schools in all aspects of the curriculum, and so that the district-wide curriculum person would deal with all of that. We do see considerable value in the coordinate coordinator and the math coordinator, so that was not a decision to eliminate those, but that was a budgetary matter.
So simply as a response, a factual response? Yes. Yes. I am going to ask the maker of the amendment to, and the accepter of this as a friendly amendment, to respond to that. And I would, stepping out of our role as chair, just ask that we remove that language regarding math and language arts coordinators unless that is clearly accepted. We're getting ourselves into something of a bind here when we put intent language in. It's very difficult in order to proceed. Does the maker of the original motion, who accepted the friendly amendment, wish to word anything differently regarding the intent?
Tom here. I have to ask you a question then. I believe the intent continues to be to reinstate these two. I understand that the intent now is also no longer to add the district-wide coordinator. If you're just asking, is that still the intent? My intent, yes.
Then with the, with that, the maker of the motion has indicated that that is the intent, yes?
All right. I think to really clarify that what Tom's saying, you're intending to add those two positions with also intending to drop the overall coordinator, so we're only net gaining one.
The intent is to add those two positions. Beyond that, it would be up to the board, well, all of it would be up to the Board of Education to deal with.
You got one to ninety-two because you're only adding one spot, not anything.
All right, any other discussion on that? Yes.
Is my understanding correct that what we have done through the various comments is replace the original amendment to the new one for ninety-two four?
Yes.
Well, then I think that ought to be on the board.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
Good evening, my name is Paul Shapiro, I live at Davis Road. I am Deputy Mayor, I'm a member of the council, but I am speaking tonight solely as a citizen, and I am not speaking for anybody else. The job of the interim superintendent is to do what's necessary to deliver the school system to the superintendent, who will be determined at the end of the search. To some degree, this budget reflects that. First, it includes the Director of Curriculum Instruction, a position that, by the way, used to exist when Dr. Kimball was superintendent. And the budget also includes two teaching positions to address issues of class size and staying within the school guidelines. I would add that those two positions were added in by the Board of Education. They were not in the acting superintendent's submitted budget. And I see some nods from the heads of the Board of Education members, so I know what I said is correct. Other priorities, in my opinion, and I would ask you to think about this, should be set by the incoming superintendent and the school board when they look at their long-term vision for the school system. We have to watch the minimum budget requirement. We add this year, and it becomes the new minimum. And although I agree with Mr. Possett about almost nothing, I do agree with what he said about that. I also agree with what he, as an aside, I also agree with what he said in terms of the House of Town Charter reads and the impact of referendum. He was right. So look at a few things about our enrollment. I looked at the Board of Education Superintendent's budget, and I particularly looked at enrollment the year that I was a first grade parent. I was oh-two, oh-three. Our enrollment was fourteen, one thousand four hundred and sixteen. I then looked at our enrollment now, which is one thousand two hundred and sixty. And according to our demographer, and the demographer's projections, which are of course not guaranteed or written in stone, are that in school year two of twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-two, our enrollment will be eleven hundred and fifty-seven, which is one hundred fewer than we have now. I would also have a projected to lose twenty, twenty students next year. It is, in my opinion, and again, something for you to think about, not a good practice at a time when we are losing students, to add numbers to our budget that we basically are, will be, will be the new, will be the new floor next year and in succeeding years. We have not elected our school, as you've heard from Doug Ryan. We're in year three of a five-year program. Two hundred thousand dollars for technology, two hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure for five years. This is in this year's budget, it's paid for in cash, it is not, we are not, we are not, we are not, we are not bonding for this. Finally, I would ask you to keep in mind those who complain about the budget, and I respect Mr. Possett's position. The budget might be seen as tied by some, you know why? Because we have three small schools, and three small schools are expensive. We have two hundred plus students in Brooklyn, we have two hundred and forty-two students in Southeast, and two hundred and sixty in Vinton. That's three principals, three nurses, three building infrastructures. But we heard you loud and clear, you want three small schools, and they cost, and some money has to go into the cost of keeping those schools running.
Tom.
I would respectfully, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate your role as moderator, Ron, and I respect for the request that you put down this amendment.
Somebody who has not yet spoken on this, Doug Cassa, seventy-five Maple Road. I just wanted to speak in support of this, that it's not adding positions in, that was just that this is the current budget right now, we're trying to retain these two positions. Education is massively changing right now in our country. For people who don't really understand the Common Core, we're demanding much more from our teachers than we ever have in the past. So to retain them, we're doing this for our teachers in our district, because they are, cannot be experts in math and language arts while doing all the things they do as teachers on a daily basis. So this is just giving us one person in the district who's an expert in math and one who's an expert in language arts. We demand so much of our teachers that our students do exceptionally well in these two subjects on the standardized tests. So this is just to make sure our teachers are given all of the skillsets they need to have the support staff so that they can deliver that education to our kids, and it's flatlined, this is what we've had previously, okay? So this is, and I don't, I don't agree with the statements that were said previously. I think we can do much more to support our schools in this town. The schools are deplorable in terms of the shape that they're in, and we should try to be a beacon in terms of outstanding education here and not just try to get by each year. That's the best message I think we can ever send to our kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Porco, I live at one-one Stonehill Road, advocate in the school system, one of the ones, name's middle. I'm also a teacher of education.
A little closer to the mic.
So I have a, my first point is actually more of a question, is I want to clarify that the one-eighty-four thousand eight hundred that's allocated for the curriculum coordinator, the Board of Ed ultimately could choose to spend it on something else, yeah?
Right.
Okay. So in some sense, this debate about the curriculum coordinator, the curriculum director or the coordinators for language arts and mathematics is more of communication with the Board of Ed than it is about a number ultimately. I think a lot of us would love to see a curriculum coordinator as well as a curriculum director as well as the language arts and mathematics coordinators, but we are sensitive to the fact that that would raise and lower rate however small that amount might be. And I would agree, I would concur with Doug and Tetea, with Tom's acceptance of the friendly amendment, that I think most of us would prefer, most of us in education, most of us who support the teachers, most of us who are experts in the field of education, would love to see the math and the language arts coordinators rather than the curriculum director if we had to make that tough decision. And part of the discussion that we had, those of us who went to many of the meetings with the Board of Ed before they adopted this budget, which I think is a very good budget, I'm really thankful for, was some discomfort with the fact that this was proposed by interim superintendents and not by somebody that was in a permanent position, and that ultimately this decision about the curriculum coordinator, the curriculum director of language arts coordination, should be deferred until we have a permanent superintendent, and he or she can make that determination how to spend those funds.
Thank you.
Annie Perkins, nine-twenty Stores Road. I am in support of this amendment, and I speak from the point of view of a science teacher, and having just come from a conference on the next generation's science standards that have evolved over the last two years, and the expertise that is required to guide our adoption of those new standards is phenomenal and needs a lot of training in that. And so my fear of having a generalized curriculum director would be that they would not guide our adoption of the science standards in a way that it is intended. There are new social studies frameworks that have just come out as well, that have just been adopted, and for that person to have the expertise in math, language arts, social studies, and science is unrealistic. And I feel like if we had that, we might be guided into a direction that is not consistent with any of those standards.
Thank you.
Arthur Smith, seventy-four Mulberry. I have been in this rodeo before, so when I speak louder, I'm not yelling, but I know there are hecklers out there who are going to say, "Speak up!" So, that's why I start. Now, let me just caution you about one thing. One thing you might not know about the insurance coverage we have. Right now, we've opted for catastrophic insurance coverage. That means we have to pay a very high premium.
Excuse me?
This is related. If you'll give me a second, heckler, if you want to take your time, mention it up here, but give me my time, Mr. Ron. Thank you. It is absolutely, I didn't know I would have a heckler so close.
Excuse me, mister, I just want to make sure that we are speaking to the motion here.
We are definitely getting to that with this catastrophic. The catastrophic insurance coverage is one hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have to meet that. So that with each employee that we have, before we can get extra monies and be out of that circle of having to fund at all, we have to come up with one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So this is the difficulty. This is the difficulty.
That each person has one chance to talk on the subject.
This is a new subject, sir. This is heckling, majority heckling. Anyone who's been in this town realizes, if you're not the majority party, this is what you have to confront. I'm familiar with it, so I'll go on. At the catastrophic level, we pay a lot for insurance. You may not have covered this in the last year, but some of our months have been seven hundred thousand dollars worth of payments. So when we look to adding new employees, it's just not the ninety-two thousand that you see up here, but it's the payments to support their benefits for every year they're here and when they retire. So I encourage you not only to look unfavorably upon the larger amount, but look unfavorably upon the ninety-two thousand. We can't afford it. And we had bipartisan support for changing the, what was it, Connecticut Municipal Employees' Retirement System Benefit Plan. That was recent. So there we have common ground and hecklers. Now it's your turn. Don't heckle, come up, speak your name, and address the issue like the rest of us. Thank you.
Greg Samuels, I live at two-eighty-three Wormwood Hill Road. I just wanted to make a point about what the councilman had said, that if we pass this and the budget for education goes up, we can never lower it again. And the problem is, the student population's going down, so I mean, what happens when we have five hundred students? We're going to spend five hundred fifty million dollars? I mean, you can't have the student population going up and the budget going down. My son goes to Southeast School, which I think is a great school, I appreciate the teachers there, but I mean, you go into like the kindergarten, there's a smart board in every class, there's flat screens all over the place. So you can't tell me there can't be cuts anywhere, because I mean, they're spending money like gangbusters on all this technology, and now they're saying they want to replace all the computers, I don't know if it's on the high school or what he's talking about, but I mean, they've spent plenty of money on technology, and the school seems fine to me. I mean, I don't know why we have to keep increasing it, and you know, I don't know about these, but once we increase it, that's it, we're stuck in our budget, and the student population is going down, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon Fion, seven-nine-five Stafford Road. I grew up here, and I moved back here specifically so my kids would go to school in Mansfield. So, and I've become to every town meeting and watching my mom fight the budget, marry her. fight the budget, marry her. So, um, I was amazed that there were years when it didn't increase at all, and, um, I don't know how we did that, I know that there were, um, cuts that affected our children. Um, I have, I have a first grader, a third grader, and a fifth grader now, and my first grader has twenty-two kids in his class. Um, I volunteer in class, it is even impossible for a teacher to teach. So, you know, we're talking about large numbers that affect us on an individual level, very small, um, to a very small degree, and, you know, I, I hear people talking about how this is gonna set this new threshold, and we can't go below this budget, but, you know, we're talking about putting back in the math and language arts coordinators, which I think is critical, but the other things that we have been cutting back and cutting back and cutting back, like paraprofessionals, like school buses, um, those are the things that if next year, the budget stays the same, or even goes up, but God forbid it has to stay the same, then, and we have a few less kids, then we can use those monies to go towards a couple more, look, school buses. I mean, I live two miles from Vinton School, and my kids ride the bus for forty-five minutes, it's ridiculous. So, if we have this surplus of money next year because we can't decrease the budget because we've set this bar where it is, um, where I feel like it should have been before now, um, there are certainly other places that we can use that money. It's not that we can't, we will have this surplus of money that we have to have in the budget because we can't pull it back, and we don't have anywhere to spend it. School buses need to be increased. I, I don't think it's as important as teachers in the classroom, but teachers in the classroom should be increased so that class size is smaller, and, and we need more buses. So there are certainly other critical places that, that we could be spending this money.
Thank you.
Esther Soper-Lawbricks, three-forty Hanks Hill Road. So I have two points to make, one to Mr. Smith, those smart boards and the flat screens that you see all over Southeast were the result of fundraising efforts by the PTO. The second point that I'd like to make is back to the, um, the two positions for math and language arts. I work at EastCon, our job at EastCon is to help support teachers in the communities that are around us. We have curriculum specialists in math, we have curriculum specialists in language arts. Those people spend every single day doing one or the other. We do not have a single person in our organization who can do both.
Are you willing to speak to this issue, or, um, okay, okay, yeah.
Uh, my name is Richard Wild, I live in Baxter Road, and I'm a second grade teacher at Goodland School. Uh, we're talking a lot here about money, we're talking, but I want people to really understand that with the flat-lined budget we have had, there is no wiggle room. Uh, we are paying for some of our supplies at this point. Um, you may think that this is exorbitant, you might think that this is, we're high in the sky, and this is, you know, this is Mansfield, but the reality is that I pay out of pocket for some of my classroom supplies. Um, we need the support. We cannot possibly do what the, the demands of the Common Core ask us to do without the support of a math coordinator and a language arts coordinator. Uh, one person cannot do a pre-K through eighth district in math and language arts. Um, you, the demands of the job nowadays are phenomenal, I've, I've been in this gig for over thirty years now, um, I have probably worked, I still feel like a first-year teacher after thirty years. The demands are incredible, the time that we have to put into this job is absolutely, you would not believe, the hours that we put in just to keep our heads above water. Um, please support this, thank you.
Just in case you don't know, um, your children can't opt out of Common Core. I just want to, um, comment a little bit about this budget, or this amendment. I don't think it's time to raise the education budget. We had a previous superintendent who probably wasn't all that fiscally responsive. So let's bring on a new superintendent with some honesty and some integrity and a sharp pencil, and maybe we can get this budget back into shape. Thank you.
Again, you're not willing to speak to this? Okay. I'll make sure to correct the guys' minds.
Martin Summer, four-ten Warren Bill Road. There is nothing more important in our community than education. Nothing at all. We heard a lot of commentary about Southeast School when my daughters went to school. Awesome, awesome school. Nothing better. Mansville Middle School, awesome, awesome school. E.O. Smith, awesome, awesome school. And I'll tell you, my daughter, Miranda, went to the World Robotics Championship because of the STEM program, because of the awesome teachers. That's what we do, that's what we support. Let's never forget that. That's what we do. That's what we do for our kids, that's what we do for our community, that's what makes us special. Everything we're talking about right now, let's think about the kids, what they need, what they need to compete, what they need to be in the twenty-first century. We can't let them down. Who cares about how somebody else might have fudged the books on? Okay, we all know about it, and we all do care, but really, should the kids, should the kids?
Call the question.
Be, should they, should they, should we? No, no. Let's, let's give them, let's give the kids what they need. That's what this is all about. It's all about the kids. And let's make sure we all think about it. It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Now, I heard a call, call of the question, and so there are two people who are waiting to speak on this issue, they can speak, and then we'll have a vote on whether to, uh, have the question called.
Mr. Sharon, I'm actually up here to call the question.
You know, I have a child, and, uh, and I fully understand the need for education. I'm not sure about Common Core, I think that's about testing, not education. But, I think you need to look a little more closely at how things are figured. Creative thinking. Uh, for example, the cost of living for people is calculated without the in, input of the cost of fuel and food. Duh. Yep, exactly. So then, when you're figuring the school budget, you get to put all that in, but we don't, you know, it, it, it's inequality. But I think you need to look not just at the children, but at the people who are just trying to make it in this town. The senior citizens who don't have any life insurance anymore, who can't take their animals to the vet, who can't get their car fixed, who's, who thought they would retire in a certain degree of comfort, and find out that they can't, they have to budget their food from week to week. I mean, really budget. Who cannot travel, who cannot do many things that we used to. There is, there are too many people in this country that are going hungry, and I would like to know why the kids at the schools can't have car washes, and the other things that we used to do to raise money before we had all this fancy stuff. There is an option, there are many options, and I don't think they've been explored, because we're up here right now financially, and it's nice to take care of the kids, but how about the senior citizens, they're disabled and so forth? Give us a little, all right? Thank you.
All right, uh, the question's been called, so let me, uh, on calling the question, all those in favor of calling the question, that is bringing the matter to the board, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the question has been called. So we will now have a vote on the motion, move that the general education fund budget, program number six-oh-oh-oh-one, be increased by ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars in ten to eighteen state medical and language arts coordinators. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, and I'm gonna have to have a standing vote. All in favor, hold your, stand. Thank you, please be seated. The motion passes. We will now return to the basic motion on the floor regarding the budget.
Charles Dayton, ninety-six Mansfield City Road, uh, resident and taxpayer since nineteen-ninety-one. Also, uh, taxpayer as a small business owner, who's been in business for eighty-two years. I have a general question. Over the course of the budget presentation process, counseling, council meetings and so forth, it's been mentioned about what the effect of the, would be on the taxpayer who owned a median-priced home, yet what a median-priced home is has not been stated, and I was wondering if we could be giving that information so that we could each individually know where we stood relative to that median price.
Yeah, that's a factual question, and I'll ask our, our, uh, stand-up question.
The median assessed home, and this is at seventy percent of its value, is one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars. Under the analysis the town conducted, sixty percent, sixty percent of single-family homeowners would see their, their taxes would either remain even or see a decrease.
Uh, let me take, please, gentlemen.
Uh, Greg Samuels, uh, Warmwood Hill Road, uh, my, mine's more of a question because, uh, I saw that the, uh, the trooper thing is going up sixty thousand dollars, and Mr. Ryan had said that we have the most number of troopers, like, in all the towns around us. The, uh, the crime rate in Mansfield is incredibly low, it's really, really low. So is it possible to put forward a, uh, a motion to lower the number of state troopers we have in town, resident troopers? Is that, is that even possible?
There would have to be, and I'm gonna ask for some help here, a motion in that regard would relate to which specific program?
The trooper program.
Uh, which is number?
Twenty-one-two-hundred.
Twenty-one-two-hundred, uh, police services. And the motion would be to reduce the budget for that program?
Correct.
By a certain amount.
Or the number of troopers.
Well...
That's why, I don't know if you know what to do with that.
Yeah, the, 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 the way our charter requires, you have to request, you have to make a motion to reduce expenditures by a certain amount.
Okay, let, let's do that.
Um, so the question is, what is the amount, and then we'll ask for discussion on that, if there's a second, we'll ask for discussion on that motion, perhaps clarification, but the amount that you wish to reduce?
Well, let's start with the whole sixty thousand.
Okay, sixty thousand dollars. Well, it, but that is the motion, is, is that your motion, sixty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, that's made and seconded. Now discussion on that motion. Uh, this is a factual comment, okay, I'm gonna ask our town administrator to respond with a factual, not, uh, advocacy.
Correct. The sixty thousand dollars in the budget, that, that is attributable to the new collective bargaining agreement that has been reached with the Connecticut State Police. The cost of a trooper in Mansfield is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
The motion stands as it was?
Well, I mean, is it possible to cut the number of troopers that we have? I mean, do we need ten troopers, full-time troopers in Mansfield?
Uh, that becomes either a factual question or a point of argument, and if it is a factual question, is it technically, legally possible, and I will just ask for a factual response.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, then my motion is to reduce the number of troopers in town.
No, the, the motion has to be two, two, and a half thousand. You wanna change that?
Let's lower it by one, I don't know.
If you wanna change it to a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, a hundred and ten thousand.
And is there a second, or has the motion?
I will, I will add that, yes.
Okay, so the, it's now a hundred and ten thousand, that was made and seconded. Now there is discussion.
Now we've just covered the cost of hiring those two, uh, those two people.
Well, let's, let's...
This is how you debate people.
I would like to discuss this issue, I am Rattastic, I live on Middle Turnpike. Um, I was going to present the same motion. I was gonna present it for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, but who's gonna split hairs? A hundred and ten thousand dollars sounds good to me. That is the equivalent of one trooper's salary. Understanding that they are the only police services that we have in this town, we have done that on purpose for ourselves, we have to live with it. When was the last time you saw a trooper working around town? Maybe when you've gone by Covington Farms, and they're in Coffee Break, or, or down the... Yeah, 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 it could be on the...
That's how the word...
I'm trying to discuss this. I don't think we need ten troopers. We can get, get by easily with nine. By reducing this amount of money, we'll force the town to lay off a trooper. We'll send a message to Hartford, perhaps we can avoid an increase in the other troopers. I am all in favor of this motion.
Thank you.
John Hand, I live at thirty-nine Bunny Lane in Stores. I originally came up to, uh, thank you for all the hard work you've done, I'm here to say that I love what you've done with the budget, and I'd like to go home, but let me address this. Uh, the gentleman who was speaking over here is saying that we don't really have a lot of crime in the town, I, from personal experience, that's not correct. In my neighborhood, we had a whole rash of break-ins, somewhere around twenty or so, so personally, even though we've had ten troopers in the area, that's not enough for me, because my neighbor's house was broken into while I was taking care of the cat and the dog, and, so, I think this is, uh, not a good idea, and I don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Tony Moran, seven-seven-eight Mansfield City Road, uh, at Town Council. Uh, several years ago, the Town Council undertook a study of police services, and there were, uh, numerous surveys and focus groups to determine what town residents wanted. The basic conclusion was that town residents wanted twenty-four-seven in-town service, and it wasn't just because of crime issues, it was also because of quality of life issues, particularly around Eastbrook Mall and around the neighborhoods around University, um, particularly around drunken behavior, uh, drunken drivers, um, per theft, the whole range of, of relatively minor issues. We aren't a high-crime town, but we are a town where people expect when there's somebody urinating in their back lawn that they can call the cops and have somebody show up before the perpetrator vanishes. Um, the results of that study were that we, in order to get twenty-four-seven in-town coverage, we needed thirteen troopers, and we have added, um, one trooper, uh, since that study to arrive at the number we have today. Um, we have frozen the number in the budget, uh, we have been hit by increased costs as the state has... Uh, we have been hit by increased costs as the state has increased the percentage of reimbursement for overtime costs, and as troopers' pension plans have increased, troopers have a higher pension than, um, pension costs than most employees because of their early retirement and, uh, other kinds of health issues. So, uh, it's an expensive program, it is far cheaper than doing it ourselves. Um, our troopers are busy, they do a great deal of community, uh, policing, and a great deal of lower-level monitoring to make sure that the town is as pleasant to live in as we can make it. Uh, I would oppose the reduction in police services, uh, in this budget. We may be forced, uh, depending what the legislature does about the reimbursement rates and about overtime rates, we may be forced in the next year to make some, uh, adjustments in this, but it is not what the town, uh, townspeople have told us that they want, and I think you will see the results, uh, the consequences. I will also say that there's a council committee looking at ways of adopting changes if such increases in costs occur.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman Brian Anderson, Ridge Road. I think we've had a really good, robust discussion of this budget tonight. I think all opinions have been represented, we're, uh, we've gone through the second hour, entering the third hour of this meeting. Uh, I call the question on this particular motion, and hope someone will, uh, soon after call the question on the budget. Thank you.
So all those who are waiting to speak on this motion can speak, and then we will have a vote on calling the question.
Doug Cass, seventy-five Maple Road. Uh, very few of us are experts on what our appropriate level of police services would be, I beg us to not drop it right now, especially with the advent of our, our new downtown, and we probably have increased needs as compared to decreased needs. Uh, and I just don't think we could pass proper judgment on what our needs are. I personally would never want to drop our level of services, and whatever the comment was said before, I see our police constantly, um, around town, and I'm quite thankful that I do. Thank you.
Judy Stone, ten-twenty-seven Mansfield City Road. I, uh, speak as both a, a nonprofit business, um, owner. I, I own a building in, uh, my organization does what they run, uh, behind the Eastbrook Mall in the professional park. We had a break-in there, and we also often have security alarms go off, and always, um, you should know that that's a big problem.
Can't hear you, please.
We had ten computers stolen from my nonprofit. It's a big, big deal for us, big deal, plus very worrisome. Also, uh, I think it was last summer, or last spring, uh, we arrived home and, uh, we're in our kitchen, and someone was on our deck. It's a weird place to have someone on your deck, uh, because we really live off the road. And the state trooper was there. Finally, I, uh, lived in Mansfield now for almost twenty years, and prior to that, I was very, very active Board of Education Vice President at Wyndham, and, uh, very, very active in the town of Wyndham. All these issues you're discussing tonight, I have been very involved with putting state trooper and school budgets in Wyndham. It, it, it's a town with a lot of promise, I think that we need to pay attention to what happens when you, um, reduce services. We need the tech, the state trooper, the town is developing, which is a very, very good thing, and I urge us to keep this in the budget.
Thank you.
Arthur Smith, seventy-four Boulder. If you attend the town council meetings regularly, you'll know that the, since we have had the police review of services, Yukon has extended their services in the community so that we have more troopers from Yukon, or more police officers from Yukon, out in our community. These numbers are misleading. You need to attend the town council meetings to have an, uh, an informed vote. So let's just go back to why we have people urinating, perhaps even in the store center. We have a package store right across the street from our high school. We deliberately placed this type of situation so that we now have these certainties in mind. If you have this type of planning, which is need your reaction to revenue, you're gonna have to really seriously consider such small details as this. How much do we need to regulate those of us in the community who are passing by these pack, package stores, or there in the evening to pick up people to see what's going on? Do we want police staff that we're paying for to be giving tickets out for this type of behavior? Or do we want the university, the university to step up and pay for this? Which is exactly what they would do if those were dorms and not partnership types of agreements. And I think you should take note that the downtown partnership has been referred to in recent town council meetings as a quasi-town agency. What?
Thank you. All right, now the question has been called, uh, there's been a motion to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question and bringing this, uh, proposal to a vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Question has been called. So we will now vote on this motion moved to reduce program, police services program number two-one-two-oh-oh by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion is defeated.
Call the basic question!
Second? The question, there's, there's been a call to call the basic question, there are four people waiting to speak. They will speak, and then we will have a vote on the motion to call the basic question.
I'd like to make a motion, um, not related to calling the question. If you didn't want to come here for the meeting, you shouldn't have come. Right? Just because it's starting to get a little late, we haven't talked about anything. This is how you spend fifty-two million dollars a year? By this antiquated system here, called the town meeting? I'd like to make a motion to reduce...
Let's ask our parliamentarian if I may. There's been a call of the question, and now then, by, by my adoption of the rules earlier, by the proviso that I inserted, I indicated that all those who wish to speak, when a question has been called and we're lined up, will speak. Does that mean that a motion at this point is in order, or does the call of the question supersede that motion?
The call of the question has priority over this, so if the call of the question is, uh, the motion to call the question is defeated, then additional motions will be in order, then that vote is the first before the additional.
This is the kind of encumbering thing that this town does to the citizens of Mansfield. You take our money, you don't allow us to make motions that we, we want to see some of this stuff reduced. I want to see some of this stuff reduced. I'm sure that there are more than two people in this audience that would like to see this budget lower.
If I can just say, the remedy is to defeat the call of the question. All of you can speak.
Point of order, I'd like a reference on Robert's Rules regarding proposing motions. There has been a call, but there's no guarantee of the call.
He hasn't voted on it yet.
I know.
Yes, we will have a vote on the call of the question. The parliamentarian has indicated that that supersedes the motion.
So if, if you vote on this, uh, uh, motion to call the question, I am not gonna be able to make a motion, is that correct?
If the motion passes.
Well, the question's gonna pass, people can loudly, loudly yell, "Call the question, call the question." Antiquated system.
Yes.
Lon Humphrey, um, forgot where I live, somewhere in town. I was up here to move the, move the question.
Okay, then, all right. I agree with him, okay. So there's a motion to call the question on the budget proposal by Councilman Ryan, basic underlying budget proposal. That requires a two-thirds affirmative vote. If it receives the two-thirds affirmative vote, we will then proceed to a vote by written ballot on the budget itself. If it does not receive a two-thirds affirmative vote, we will continue the meeting, and all motions will be in order. So, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to calling the question, say no.
No.
It is not clear to me that that is a two-thirds vote, so may I ask all those in favor of calling the question to stand with your... All those, please be seated, all those opposed to calling the question, please stand. It is apparent to me that a two-thirds vote has approved calling the question. So we will now move to by written ballot...
I don't believe they properly addressed you, sir, by giving their name and address, so the call to question may not be legal. Point of order, please?
The proposal was made initially by whoever made the initial, who made the initial proposal to call the question.
Is that recorded?
The gentleman shouted from the back.
It's not recorded, it's non-vallied at all.
Mr. Anderson made the initial motion, and he gave his address.
Excuse me, it was called from the back.
Lon Humphrey, okay, Lon, then Mr. Humphrey made the initial motion. Please give your name and address again. Then we will have a re-vote, we will have another motion to call the question. No, we will have a motion now to call the question. Who made the motion? No, no.
Did you learn following procedure in the Soviet Union power?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, if you...
Yes.
Proper procedure, when you disagree with a ruling by the chair, is to make a motion to appeal the ruling.
Okay.
And if that doesn't occur, the chair's ruling stands. So if you want to follow procedure, make a motion to appeal this rule.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second?
So state specifically, the motion is to appeal my ruling that the call of the question was appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is to appeal my ruling that the call of the question was appropriate. All those in, and that motion has been seconded.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
I was waiting in line to make a motion, you said anybody who's standing waiting to make a motion could make, could speak.
That is not correct.
Oh, that's not correct.
I said that anyone who's waiting in line to speak to a motion that has been made can speak to that motion.
Like the motion for the budget? Yeah, that's been made.
You all are gonna pass the budget anyway, so let's get on with it, okay?
There is a motion, there's a motion on the floor to appeal the ruling of the moderator that the call of the question was appropriate.
Discussion on motion?
Yes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second on motion.
Now I'm discussing it.
For those of you who regularly attend town council meetings...
Please proceed.
Thank you. Heplers, I love you. For those of you who regularly, that are attending the town council meetings, one of the things you'll notice right away is this type of heckling and this type of bullying is consistent with the way they do politics here, and it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate when someone raises their voice to be heard. They can both be accused of not speaking loud enough and shouting. But one thing we should be able to agree on is Robert's Rules, and they have been violated tonight. If you care about your time and not wasting time, at least agree to that. We are going to adhere to Robert's Rules, and the moderator this evening did not. Mr. Hossick has the ability at this point to raise his motion that was directly, directly addressing Mr. Ryan's motion that was before us, and he was in line to do so. And any ruling contrary to that is in violation of Robert's Rules. Thank you again.
And make a call question on this motion.
Name?
Second of order. Mr. Hossick had already spoken once. I was in line behind him, I had not spoken yet. According to your instructions at the beginning of the meeting, I should have been, uh, recognized before Mr. Hossick got his second team.
Let, let me just recap, and, and let, let me say that there's something vaguely unreasonable. The initial proposal, the initial proposal that I made when we discussed the rules was that we would abide by Robert's Rules of Order with the proviso that may differ from Robert's Rules only in this extent, that anyone waiting in line to speak to a motion that has been made may do so. Had I not made that proviso, the question could be called at any time, and people not, people waiting in line would not have the right to speak to that motion. There was no question about a motion superseding a call of the question. That is not within Robert's Rules. A call of the question supersedes all discussion. The only proviso was that as a matter of courtesy, those waiting to speak to a motion on the floor would be given the opportunity to do so. My ruling was that the call of the question was in order. There is a motion to overturn my ruling to that extent. That motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
Martin Summer, four-ten Warrenville Road. Robert's Rules of Order specifies that we adhere to motions that are on the table. The discussion that has distracted us from actually calling the question about the budget are actually all discussions that were things that were not on the table. So no, all of this procedure, all of this discussion is actually without the bounds of Robert's Rule of Order, and I would like to call the question.
Let me, could you, one more person wishing to speak on this?
Jeanette Picard, seventy-two Timber Drive. I've often spoken in support of the budget for education, I'm a teacher. I spend my day with fifth through eighth graders in middle school. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for our town. We have a moderator who has volunteered his time to work for us. We have many people...
Point of order, this is happening for us.
It is discussion of the motion.
We have many people who are here to speak, we have many people who are here to listen. Please, let's be civil. Our, our town is much better than this. Thank you.
There's now been a call of the question on the question of overturning the rule of the moderator, that the initial call of the question on the budget resolution was approved. Now, does everybody understand? What we are voting on now is calling the question on the motion to overturn the ruling of the moderator. Everybody understand that? All those in favor of calling the question on that matter, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We have now called the question, now the motion before us is overturning my ruling that the initial call of the question was, on the budget resolution, was in order. All those in favor of overturning my ruling, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The motion is defeated. The question has been called. We will now proceed to a vote on the underlying budget resolution proposed by Councilman Ryan as amended. And let, let's just recap, one of the amendment that was approved... So, all those who, this, this will be by written ballot, simply check yes or no, and bring your ballots to that ballot box. Yes. There's a point of order that I can't hear, please.
Are we not voting on the total budget and not what's on the screen?
We are voting on the budget as amended by what was on the screen. Does everybody understand that? Does everybody understand that? For those of you who are waiting, it will take about, I think, 20 minutes or so to do our count, at which point we will answer that. And, uh, for those who are not waiting, please, please, please. For those who don't want to wait for the count, I'm told the results will be on the town website tomorrow morning. Let me just reconvene the meeting to announce the results of the vote. Yes, 223, no, 69. Yes, 223, no, 69. And that concludes our business, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye!
Thank you for memorable experience.